Members will take their seats. Visitors, please retire behind the rail. We'll get moving. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Dr. Darren McKinney, Senior, of Bright Hope Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Blackwell. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President Clark and Councilwoman Blackwell for this opportunity to share. Thank you, councilpersons, for your continuous leadership and service. Shall we pray? Great Eternal One, Architect of the Universe, for grace we come, asking for your power and presence in this space and place. Thank you for these councilpersons that you have entrusted with this sacred task of advancing and governing our great city. We ask for your blessings and guidance as they begin this session, which will serve to improve and empower the lives of Philadelphians. Bless them with your wisdom, discernment, care, and compassion. Touch every heart, head, and hand so that by your will, justice, peace, and prosperity shall prevail. Help our councilpersons to continue to fully embrace the sacredness of their work. Allow them to fervently execute their duties with integrity and grace. Bless their families and loved ones as they seek to do your bidding. Let your sovereign spotlight immolate from this chambers today and every day for your sake. And Lord, as I conclude this prayer, I ask that you bless the Seventy-Sixers in your name. Amen.
Okay. We want to keep moving. Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 19, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 19, 2018 be approved.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 19, 2018 stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next request, are there any requests for leave of absence? And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Marie Quinones Sanchez.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, and it shall be granted. Are there any requests for leave of absence on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilman O.
On behalf of the minority, no request for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has come down to witness their government in action today. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, we really thank you for being here today. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who present a resolution honoring and recognizing the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority's 110th Anniversary with Ms. Carol Parkinson-Hall, Dr. Robin Jones, and Jackie Hugue. And those accompanying them, please join the Councilmen at the podium. And joining Councilman Johnson, we have Councilman Green, Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Al Taubberger. And Councilman Jones. And next year, we have to get a bigger stage.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I want to thank all of my colleagues for joining me today as we honor and celebrate the 110th Anniversary of Alpha Kappa Alpha. Let's give them a round of applause. I'm going to take a moment to acknowledge the three chapter Presidents who are in attendance today. Ms. Carol Parkinson-Hall, she's the President of Omega Omega Chapter. Dr. Robin Jones, President of Rhod Theta Omega Chapter. Attorney Jackie... Hughie, President of Omega Mu Omega Chapter. And one of my outstanding, dear advocates when it comes to making sure all young people receive a quality education here in the city of Philadelphia, she's always standing up for parents who send their children to public schools here in the city of Philadelphia, Evelyn Sample Oats. Who served on the International Board of Directors of Alpha Kappa Alpha for eight consecutive years as a two-time Regional Director of North Atlantic Region and the International Region. And so I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the lovely ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha today for their hard work and their dedication, but most importantly, their service to humanity. Rave of them getting up on Saturday mornings and refurbishing and engaging in partnerships and making sure all of our young people have high-quality playgrounds and parks to play in here in the city of Philadelphia or providing scholarships for our young ladies to go on to become great achievers in our society. I thought it was only right to take a moment today to acknowledge them for their 110th Anniversary. I also would be remiss if I wouldn't acknowledge Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake. Let's give her a round of applause. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the Honorable Lori Dumas, who's with us today as well. You know, I am not a part of any Greek fraternity, but however... However, I don't know. Wife did hook that up. When we talk about service primarily when it comes to the African-American community and creating a legacy of helping humanity, I wanted to take a moment out of my busy schedule to acknowledge the fine work that these young leaders are doing. With individuals such as Kamala Harris, who's the first African-American U.S. Senator, or Catherine Johnson, who is the star of, we all saw the movie Hitting Figures, you know, so we've been sending people to the moon before they were actually really sending people to the moon. Individuals such as Sonia Sanchez, or Bernice King, the daughter of MLK, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., or Loretta Devine, the great comedian, Wanda Sykes, or some honorary members such as Coretta Scott King, Rosa Parks, Maya Angelou, Alicia Keys, Marian Anderson. We know that this sorority has produced some of the finest and brightest and best leaders that our society has to offer, and so today we will be acknowledging them for their hard work and dedication to humanity. And again, I thank all my colleagues for being here with me today. And the resolution reads, honoring and recognizing the Sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority for its dedication to sisterhood and service in celebration of the sorority's 110th Anniversary.
Many thanks to Alpha Kappa Alpha for all of the work that they do in our communities, especially in the Eighth District. Whereas, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is a national sisterhood founded in 1908 at Howard University under the leadership of Ethel Hedman-Lyle. Other founders included Anna Easter Brown, Beulah Elizabeth Burke, Lily Burke, Marjorie Hill, Margaret Flag Holmes, Lavinia Norman, Lucy Diggs Slow, and Marie Woolfolk Taylor. And... Whereas founded by a group of young women who were conscientious of their unique positions as college-educated women of color, just decades removed from the horrific era of slavery. This, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, has remained dedicated to its motto, and I quote, "Service to all mankind since its founding days," and...
Whereas, since 1908, the sisterhood has grown from the founding nine members into an organization of nearly 300,000 SARs at over 1,000 chapters worldwide. To this day, the sisterhood remains focused in its support of programs aimed at improving community health, education, and human rights, among other issues, and...
Whereas, among the many initiatives founded by the Sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha are several programs related to increasing educational access and attainment. The Educational Advancement Foundation, founded in 1980, is a tax-exempt branch of the sorority dedicated to providing financial support to individuals and organizations engaged in lifelong learning. Through EAF, Alpha Kappa Alpha has provided more than $200,000 in scholarships to 1,400 students nationwide, and if they specifically said Philadelphia, Sherrell Parker would have been one of them.
As a member of another Greek organization that shares Kappa in its title, it brings a great pride to read the resolution. Whereas, from January 11th to 15th, 2018, the Sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha gathered in Washington, D.C. at the campus of Howard University, where their sisterhood was born, to celebrate the 110th Anniversary of the organization's founding. In their finest pink and green attire, thousands of AKA SARs united in the name of service to all mankind in the celebration of the sisterhood's remarkable history, and...
And whereas, wearing red at a AKA cleanup can cost you $50,000. Whereas, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is an organization that has dedicated itself to the ISI ideas of sisterhood and community empowerment for more than 100 years. The city of Philadelphia, city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, is proud to join the AKA celebration of its 110th National Founder's Day, now therefore be it.
I too want to thank them for all that they do. They volunteer for us every year. Thank you, Stephanie. And all of you, thank you. Resolve that the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby honor and recognize the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority for its dedication to sisterhood and service in celebration of the sorority's 110th Anniversary. Congratulations.
Thank you, and the Chair recognizes Ms. Hall for remarks. Ms. Hall?
Be always ready. Good morning. It is indeed an honor to stand before you today and just to say thank you because you allow us to serve. You support us in so many ways. When we're out there on the playgrounds, all of the community service that we do, city councilmembers come and support us, and we're thankful. We're thankful for this opportunity. We're thankful for the partnership, and you know what? There's so much more to do. So although we can't stand and rest on our laurels, there's so much more to do, and we hope that you will grab our hands as we continue to empower, uplift, and strengthen families across this great city. God bless you all.
It's always wonderful to be recognized, but even more wonderful is the feeling that we get when we are serving the communities of Philadelphia. This has been such an awesome experience over the years as we've mentored children, provided scholarships, done the playgrounds, collected shoes and given them out, and so many other things that we want to continue and will continue to do the same. As we look into our future with the chapters here of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, we know that we will continue to do the same and have the support of both the council, community leaders, and community members themselves throughout Philadelphia. Thank you.
Greetings, Council President Clark and all members of City Council. I'm Jacqueline Hughie, President of the Omega Mu Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, which is the third graduate chapter in the city of Philadelphia. We were chartered a year and a half ago on September 18, 2016, by 35 phenomenal women, and since that time, we have grown to 83 members. The area that we serve in the city is from the Delaware River, from northeast Philadelphia to south Philadelphia. In particular, we have worked primarily with the residents from the Gambrel Recreation Center, Marion Anderson Recreation Center, and the Albany Elementary School, where we planted trees, donated books, refurbished playgrounds, and established an emergency food pantry, among other things. I would like to extend special thanks to Councilman Kenyatta Johnson for his dedication and commitment to the people of Philadelphia and his support of Omega Mu Omega Chapter. He attended our chartering in 2016, and he also gave us some grant money to support our community service efforts. Don't know if you remembered, but you did. And thank you to the entire City Council for your recognition today of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and our 110 years of service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Council President Clark and all members of City Council, I just want to say thank you so much for this recognition 110 years later, and we're still standing strong, still working hard, and still helping to serve all mankind and uplift the communities of Philadelphia. So we work with you councilmembers hand in hand to make sure that this is the best city in the country and to make sure that Philadelphia remains the city of brotherly love, but most importantly, sisterly affection. So thank you very much.
Council ladies.
The President should go a real round. Come on, Anderson.
Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Dom, who present a resolution recognizing the 50th Anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. With Joseph Ray, Angela McIver, and those accompanying them, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Dom, we have Councilman Jones, Councilman Green, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Parker, and Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilman O. And we also have Councilman Taubberger. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman. Can we have a little quiet, please?
I'm happy that we have the Fair Housing Rights Center in southeastern Pennsylvania, the Fair Housing Commission, and the Greater Philadelphia Association of Realtors here to join us in recognizing this important anniversary. And recognizing the 50th Anniversary of the Fair Housing Act and marking the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Take a little prerogative as a Pennsylvania Human Relations Commissioner to say how big a deal this is. I learned how important a ZIP code determines outcomes in everyone's lives to where you work, where you're educated, how close you are to a hospital or other amenities can change the trajectory of one's life. And therefore, whereas, April 11, 2018 marks the 50th Anniversary of the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy for fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familiar status, and handicap, encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens, and...
Special thank you to Angela McIver for all she does over the years to be helpful. And whereas, we recognize that where people live has a direct impact on the quality of their health, education, and access to economic opportunities, and...
Whereas, fair housing supports the development of racially and economically diverse communities, and...
Whereas, fair housing plays a critical role in fostering healthy people and neighborhoods, and we acknowledge that where someone lives affects both their physical and mental well-being, and...
Whereas, fair housing has a role in creating and expanding educational opportunities as the presence of affordable, stable housing can support holistic community development, including improved schools, tutoring, and strong extracurricular programs, and...
Whereas, housing plays an important role in low-income households. Ability to achieve and maintain the stability necessary to pursue their financial goals and escape poverty is a stable provided by affordable housing that can help households secure, maintain employment, increase their savings, and increase their independence, and...
Whereas, the city of Philadelphia is dedicated to providing its private citizens, employees, public housing, and nonprofit organizations with the knowledge and tools to recognize housing discrimination, now therefore be it.
Resolve that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes the 50th Anniversary of the Fair Housing Act and marks the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Philadelphia.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Ray for remarks.
Good morning.
Morning.
Council President Clark, members of council. Thank you, Councilman Dom, for presenting me with the opportunity to address this legislative body. I'd also like to especially thank our members who came here today. My name is Joseph Ray. I am a... I am a Realtor in the city of Philadelphia and serve as the 2018 president of Greater Philadelphia Association of Realtors. With more than 2,500 members, GPAR has served as the voice of real estate in Philadelphia since 1908. We have a proven track record of advocating for policies that protect the rights of private owners and benefit this entire city, not just our Realtor community. As stated, the resolution, April is Fair Housing Month, and this year, we mark the 50th anniversary of the federal enactment of the Fair Housing Act, passed in 1968, one week after the assassination of Martin Luther King and the year I was born. The purchase of a home is one of the most significant events that any person will experience in their lifetime. It is more than just buying a house. It includes the hopes, dreams, aspirations, and economic destiny of those involved. There were many mistakes made in the past in relations to fair housing. The nation and Realtors did not always support fair housing rights. In fact, Realtors opposed passage of the Fair Housing Act and at one time allowed local associations to exclude members based on race or sex. Realtors also defended many real estate practices that enabled and allowed housing discrimination and neighborhood segregation to flourish. These past mistakes highlight why the Fair Housing Act was needed 50 years ago. Today, our strict Realtor code of ethic strongly stands against discrimination and imposes obligations upon Realtors in every phase and aspect of our work. Our association is deeply committed to working with our stakeholders on fair housing, educating our members, and taking the proper enforcement actions when there are violations of our code. As a Hispanic and someone who has experienced racism firsthand, I would like to share with you why this act and resolution today is so meaningful to me. My mom and dad are Cuban immigrants. My father and his family fled from the role of Fidel Castro for a better life in Philadelphia. Mom was already here visiting her uncle and was unable to return to Cuba. She would not see her family for 20 years. They married here and settled in Philly. I was born in Logan, predominantly African-American neighborhood. My best friend was Monty Smith. We moved, later moved to Hunting Park. We moved to Alany from Hunting Park because of racial tensions, mainly between another Hispanic family on our block, the Santiago's, and a couple other families. I remember one Saturday morning at the age of five not being allowed to go out and play because there was blood stains on my sidewalk. So shortly after, in 1975, my father decided to move us to Alany. At the age of 46, he became a first-time homebuyer. I was devastated to leave my friends and did not understand. Just three months after our move, the Santiago house was firebombed. Five were killed. Mr. Santiago was the only survivor. He lost his wife, three children, and a teenage family friend. These were people I knew. And at six years old, I now knew what racism was. Moving to Alany did not shelter us from racism. Although I met most of my best friends till this day there, many who protected me, we still had incidents and memories. My first friend and neighbor moved a year after we moved in. Whites beat up blacks, blacks beat up whites. Korean street signs were torn down. One summer, bricks were thrown through our big-picture window at my family gathering because we were speaking another language. Later in life, I am proud to say that other language helped me sell many homes in my neighborhood, which is where I first started practicing real estate. And I am proud to say most of my sales worked to the protected classes of the Fair Housing Act, which we are now celebrating. In fact, that neighborhood, Alany, is now the most linguistically diverse in all of Pennsylvania. Ray Sherrill?
Yes, it is.
How ironic. So ultimately, my parents had the right to decide where they raised their family. They had the right to pick the place where they wished to call home. We earned their respect and grew to love our neighbors and neighborhood. Thanks to the Act and to Century 21 Weber, no family or person should ever feel racism or intimidation, especially at the place they call home. My memories will serve as a reminder that all of us must continue to work every day to advance the rights defined and protected by the Fair Housing Act. Philadelphia's vibrant mix of cultures is what makes us great and gives us strength. It makes us who we are. As we mark the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, we recognize that any progress made stands on the shoulders of generations that preceded us. The people that marched in unwelcome cities, protested in contentious environments, challenged discriminatory practices, and fought quietly in legislative sessions and community gatherings. We understand that there's still work to do. Today, we work to address continuing discrimination to protect the LGBTQ community in Fair Housing Act. We work for the day when everyone will have the opportunity to experience the American dream. In closing, I am proud of the fair housing work our association's diversity committee and board of directors have done. They've forged meaningful partnerships with Rue Landau and the Philadelphia Fair Housing Commission and with Amber Hikes and the city's Office of LGBT Affairs. One of very few in the country, by the way. We look forward to doing more with our stakeholders in the future. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Councilman Dom, for welcoming me to speak and celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. And God bless our 76ers.
And Ms. McIver.
I would like to recognize Angela McIver, Board Secretary and CEO of the Fair Housing Rights Center for brief remarks.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Thank you to Council President Clark, council members, and especially Councilman at Large Dom. Again, my name is Angela McIver, Chief Executive Officer of the Fair Housing Rights Center in southeastern Pennsylvania and Pennsylvania Advisory Committee Member of the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. Thank you for reserving April 26, 2018 to declare April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Philadelphia. On a historical note, from 1966 through 67, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. served as our nation's first tester and worked with President Johnson on housing fairness legislation. On April 4, 1968, Dr. King was assassinated. Seven days later, on April 11, 1968, President Johnson and Congress signed Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, as amended in 1988. On April 11, 2018, our nation witnessed the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, an anti-discrimination law that covers most housing transactions, protects seven classes of persons, and includes furthering fair housing. Under the New Deal, the Roosevelt administration implemented discriminatory government-sponsored programs against most of the current protected classes. This is also known as de jure segregation. The private business sector mimicked the discriminatory governmental practices and policies to reinforce and contribute to what is known as de facto segregation. The legacy of the federal government and the private business sectors remains intact and entrenched in housing policies and in many marginalized communities. In Philadelphia, we refer to them as racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. Ten years after the financial crisis, many residents of Philadelphia struggle to participate in the American dream. To create an even playing field, I encourage leaders, and I want to underscore the word encourage, because I think it's my role to be your partner in this. And that's to enforce anti-discrimination laws, remove barriers that preclude African-Americans, Latinos, and poor Asians from accessing capital, support programs that generate wealth and income, expand the definition of credit, adopt a local Community Reinvestment Act ordinance, create more access to habitable and affordable housing, continue to work on the current Assessment of Fair Housing Plan, educate housing providers about, or rather beforehand, about not violating the reasonable accommodations and reasonable modifications provisions of the Federal Fair Housing Act as well as the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. Develop sound housing policies that enhance education and labor outcomes as those things are interconnected. Improve Section 3 activities. Address human relations issues in gentrifying communities. Increase housing counseling and provide more direct education for residents in neighborhoods that are being severely impacted by the effects of tangled titles. To increase public awareness and understanding of several types of fair housing violations and ways to triumph over discrimination, the Fair Housing Rights Center in southeastern Pennsylvania will be premiering the private screening of an independent documentary entitled Memoir of a Home: Meet the Brown Family That Revitalized Parkside Avenue. The private screening is scheduled for Monday, April 30, 2018, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I apologize for not being able to announce the location, but I signed a contract stating that I wouldn't disclose the location. The screening is important because from 1963 through 2013, the Parkside Development Corporation restored and renovated 25 properties, which includes 146 units. Fair Housing Rights Center acknowledges that the Browns and the Parkside Development Corporation, which later became known as Parkside Historic Preservation Corporation, for believing in the significance of their work and persevering through many man-made discriminatory obstacles. In conclusion, as our nation evolves, may more ambitious people emerge to address the housing crisis by developing and managing more of their own real estate ventures. Thank you very much for an opportunity to address you during this time.
Thank you. Council ladies. Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman O, who presented a resolution proclaiming the week of April 27, 2018 to May 5, 2018 as the 8th Annual Philly Tech Week. With Ms. Alexandria Leggett and those joining her, please accompany the councilman to the podium.
Good morning. Joining us, in addition to Alexandria Leggett, a community liaison for Philly Tech Week and event coordinator with Technically, are Danielle Khan, Executive Director, Entrepreneurial Engagement, Comcast NBC Universal; Lori Ackman, Chief Operating Officer, Penn Center for Innovation; Glenn Bryant, University of Pennsylvania; Jeanette Lloyd, Marketing Manager at Technically, Jamoka Data Tech Women Network; Bridgette Daniels, Mogalet TKTK Black Girl Ventures; Sylvester Mobley, Coded by Kids. All right. Well, this is a proclamation. It's a resolution proclaiming the week of April 27, 2018 to May 5, 2018 as the 8th Annual Philly Tech Week, presented by Comcast and honoring the board and vibrant Philadelphia technology community. The technology community here in Philadelphia, along with our Eds and Meds, have certainly done a lot to lift up our city, the innovation, all that's going on. So it's wonderful for Technically Philly and all its organizations to be recognized. Councilman O'Neal?
Whereas the Philadelphia technology, innovation, and creative communities are again coming together to celebrate their importance to the region's economy, culture, and future. And whereas the Philadelphia technology community, with leadership from local technology news organization, Technically Philly, has again organized a series of 100 events around technology and innovation in Philadelphia called Philly Tech Week, scheduled from April 27, 2018 to May 5, 2018, and...
Whereas the 8th Annual Philly Tech Week will kick off at Schmidt's Commons, featuring its signature outdoor app arcade. Subsequent events will be hosted throughout the city, organized into seven track themes: creative, access, dev, civic, business, media, and sciences. The highlighted events include workshops for nonprofits, a one-day conference incorporating programming, demos, networking, and personalized connection, and the Philly Tech Week's signature event to be held at the Reading Terminal Market. And whereas the title sponsor is Comcast NBC Universal and the collaboration sponsor is the University of Pennsylvania, and...
Whereas the dev track is presented by Cerner, Power, EPAM, TD Bank, El Severe, and Integrity Chain, the business track is presented by Archer, Saul Ewing, Arnstein, and Layer, SAP, and Vanguard Innovation Studio. And whereas the creative track is presented by Think Company, the media track is presented by Hero Digital, the civic track is presented by Uber, and the sciences track is presented by the Science Center, and...
The annual Philly Tech Week has developed into great importance to the city's technology and innovation community for fostering innovation, collaboration, and entrepreneurship. And whereas the continuation of Philly Tech Week as an annual celebration and gathering of influencers in the technology and innovation sphere furthers Philadelphia's reputation as an emerging east coast technology hub. Now, therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it declares the week of April 27, 2018 to May 5, 2018 as the 8th Annual Philly Tech Week, presented by Comcast, encourages all Philadelphians to participate in the series of scheduled events and conversations around technology, innovation, and entrepreneurship, and commends the board and vibrant Philadelphia technology community for creating jobs, growing partnerships, and remaining committed to the betterment of our city. Further resolved that in gross copy of the resolution be presented to representatives of Philly Tech Week as evidence of the sincere sentiment of this legislative body. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Chair recognizes Ms. Leggett for remarks.
Thank you, Counselman David O, for introducing this resolution, and to all of the council members that are supporting it. I would be committing a true disservice to all of you without recognizing the council members that represent the parts of my journey through this city that ended up with me being at this podium. So hello to Counselwoman Darryl Clark. My family's first home in Philadelphia was in District Five, Fourth and Gerard. Counselwoman Quinones Sanchez, I graduated from the original Kensington Kappa High School in District Seven. When I returned from college in New York, I took residence in Counselwoman Bass's District Eight, and I'm now employed in Counselwoman Squill's District One and take the trolley at night to reside in Counselwoman Blackwell's District Three. So your constituencies have been the environment that continues to produce me and rolling stones like me. My name is Alexandria Leggett. I coordinate events and lead the calendar curation at Technically. We are the local tech news organization that is the lead organizer of Philly Tech Week 2018, presented by Comcast. I'm joined by several community organizers and supporters. This includes Comcast, of course, Coded by Kids, Women Tech Network, Webjunto, Mogalet, and Black Girl Ventures. After six months of planning, we started in November. Tomorrow marks the start of the impressive showcase of the Philadelphia tech ecosystem by way of 100 curated events over 10 days. It's the brightest representation of just how large, engaged, and cohesive our tech community actually is. And I'm proud to say that this is the most diverse and inclusive community calendar that I have seen after my three years of leading the curation of this calendar. It's a very big deal. Events range from entry-level professional development to tech summits for female founders of color, roundtables to map out what's to come in Philly, and award ceremonies to pat ourselves on the back, because we are doing things. The common thread is simple: we are convening the game-changing innovators in a city that is used to being the underdog. That's an Eagles reference. That means tens of thousands of attendees at dozens of different locations around the city, support from both young startups and the region's largest employers, like our title sponsor Comcast. And we at Technically not only report on these leaders, we're organizing them. Members of council, I'd like to use this opportunity to leave you with a clear message: the Philadelphia technology community is here to make an impact. This community represents the future employers, the patent holders, the artists, educators, and company leaders. As Philadelphia's wealth gap grows, it is up to these leaders to set the example for other industries. An equal and all-inclusive workforce starts with access. While the entirety of the Philly Tech Week calendar is open to the public, nearly half of these events are free to attend. This type of inclusivity is what's absolutely vital to obtain the future we're all striving for. It's what matters to you and to your constituents and to this city. I'd like to say, collaboration is the theme that thrives, so let's join forces, and we need your support. The easiest entry is reading about what's happening in the tech scene on Technically. We have a concise newsletter that I will personally sign any of you up for. But first, your first step, it starts tomorrow, come out, experience the work of this community firsthand, meet people, and you will be amazed. They claim that they have to search for the innovation and that it is not happening. They have to search for the diversity. It is all happening right here. Come be engaged, and we will show you exactly what we've been working for, the last six months and the last eight years. Thank you again.
Counsel, please. Thank you. And again, congratulations. Next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill numbers 180236, 180237, 180239, 180284, 180285, 180286, 180287, 180288, 180289, 180292, 180293, 180295, and a University of Pennsylvania Master Plan Amendment. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 20, 2018, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on April 19, 2018, Bill Number 180218. And that on April 24, 2018, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on April 12, 2018, Bill Numbers 171, 110A, and 180215. And I am submitting here with, for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2201 North 27th Street, 2603 through 51 West Susquehanna Avenue, 2219 through 21 North 27th Street, 2223 North 27th Street, 2225 North 27th Street, 2227 North 27th Street, and 2610 through 16 West Fletcher Street, located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2776 through 2778 Emerald Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2860 North Leaf Gau Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2022 Kimball Street, located in the 2nd Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1728 Marlton Avenue, located in the 3rd Councilmanic District. And a resolution approving the appointment of Abby Pozewski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those messages will be printed in the journal. Do you have any additional communications in your possession?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next issue will be the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Counselwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution this morning.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
Coach Bass and Counselwoman Gimm. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Public Safety and Children and Youth to hold hearings on the status of educational, extracurricular, health and wellness, and career programming designed to divert girls from the juvenile justice system.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Counselwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
Thank you.
And ordinance authorizing Louis Louis Restaurant to install, loan, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 3611 Walnut Street.
And that will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1728 Marlton Avenue, located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Counselwoman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer on your behalf one bill.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance approving the 15th Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the Cecilby-Moore Avenue, urban manure area, being the area generally bounded by 15th Street on the east, Jefferson Street on the south, 19th Street on the west, and Montgomery Avenue on the north, including the 15th Amendment to the urban manure plan.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Counselman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Counselman. Chair recognizes Counselman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills and one privileged resolution, cosponsored by the members of the City Council rowing team.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ridge Avenue, Gorgas Lane Extended, Henry Avenue, Valley Avenue, and Domino Lane, and an ordinance authorizing Marty Inc. Doing Businesses Le Bus Bistro to install, loan, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 4201 Ridge Avenue, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by the School Call Expressway, Greenland Drive, Martin Luther King Drive, and Montgomery Drive, and by amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by amending Section 14905 entitled Non-Accessory Signs by adding a new subsection to permit one advertising sign.
Those three bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Congress to release the necessary funding required to dredge the School Call River, which is crucial in maintaining Philadelphia's status as the nation's best competitive rowing city.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Counselman Johnson.
Council President, I have four bills. I have one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf, and I would like to speak on my bill.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Phillies to install, loan, and maintain security bollard encroachments at One Citizens Bank Way.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Gina Marie Narducci to install and maintain an exterior metal staircase encroachment at 1805 Washington Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 44S by striking from the City Plan and vacating the easternmost 10 feet wide portion of Broad Street from Geary Street to a point approximately 105 feet southwesterly therefrom.
And refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Safety by repealing certain provisions relating to police and fire radio broadcasts.
And that will be referred to committee. Counselman, did you have a resolution or an ordinance you wanted to speak on?
Resolution.
Resolution. All right, thank you.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Abby Pozewski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committees on Public Safety and Legislative Oversight to investigate Police Department progress in ensuring the constitutionality and racial neutrality of stops and frisks pursuant to the settlement agreement in Bailey versus the City of Philadelphia.
That one? Chair recognizes Counselman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, colleagues, today I'm introducing a resolution authorizing hearings of one of the most complicated and difficult issues in American society: policing and race. I'd like to begin by noting my profound appreciation and respect for the demands of police work. We ask our men and women in blue to navigate a maze of complex, physical, psychological, emotional, and legal challenges. We ask them to run towards danger, to defuse conflict, to give medical attention, to provide comfort to victims, to refer those in need to social services, and to gather evidence. Often, they have to exercise judgment in quickly moving, tense, and even dangerous situations. That's a lot to ask human beings to do while neutralizing the biases that we all have lurking in our subconsciences. But because the stakes of police work are so high, we must insist on high standards. I have faith in Commissioner Ross to provide leadership in attaining those high standards. He deserves much of the credit for the improvements the Philadelphia Police Department has already made. Unconstitutional stops and frisks are down by half, and racial disparities in unconstitutional stops and frisks are relatively small. However, there is more work to be done. Even after controlling for geographic variation in demographics, employment, and crime rates, African-Americans are twice as likely to be stopped and frisked as Caucasians in Philadelphia. Those disparities are even more stark in predominantly Caucasian neighborhoods like Rittenhouse Square in the 2nd Councilmanic District, where the arrest of two men recently made national news in the Starbucks Cafe located at 18th and Spruce Streets. The neighborhood is 3% of African-American residents, but 67% of those are stopped by stop-and-frisk tactics by the Philadelphia Police Department. Almost seven years after the settlement of the consent decree with the ACLU, it is now time for us to take a close look at the progress of the lawsuit and consider how we can get to the goal of constitutional race-neutral policing in the city of Philadelphia. I look forward to working with Commissioner Ross and all the stakeholders and my colleagues to get there. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Counselman. That will be on today's final passes' calendar. Chair recognizes Counselman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have two bills that I'm introducing today.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19, 1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by amending Section 19405 entitled Excluded Transactions by replacing gendered marital signifiers.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 19, Chapter 2900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low Income Special Tax Provisions to make certain technical changes.
Refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Counselwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two non-privileged resolutions. The first one relative to HUD is cosponsored by Councilmembers Blackwell, Greenlee Sanchez, Reynolds Brown, Johnson, Green, and Dom. And the second one, Mr. President, that I would wish to be recognized after the title, is read as cosponsored by Councilmembers Gimm and Dom.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on Congress to reject the proposal from HUD Secretary Ben Carson, which would triple the minimum rent cost for individuals in public housing, eliminate deductions for medical and childcare costs, and allow public housing agencies and property owners to impose work requirements impacting 4.7 million families relying on federal housing assistance.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the First Judicial District to develop user-friendly forms to improve access to justice for unrepresented victims of illegal possession of real property, and to facilitate an improved process for said victims to be heard by the court to address the rising level of illegal possessions of residential properties, and to address the problems with the current system so as to prevent delayed justice and irreparable harm to homeowners.
Chair recognizes Counselwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, last week during one of my budget briefings and town hall meetings, a group of constituents from a block in the... group of constituents from a block in the Longcrest section of the 9th Councilmatic District approached me about a criminal squatting situation that was happening on their block. Now, I want to note for the record that these were seniors, some of them were young families, and they had children, young children, who lived in their homes near this site. And when the residents complained to me, and it wasn't a complaint, they were voicing concerns about a negative impact that this activity is having on their quality of life, they noticed that they're witnessing prostitution, drug dealing, and even within the house where this activity is occurring, there are children living there. Now, while we immediately got to work, Mr. President, to try to bring different departments together, we're having a call this afternoon. The unfortunate issue was that the only way that most folks are able to resolve a case like this is when they go to court and file an order of ejectment. And for many homeowners, the process is difficult and it's confusing, especially if they're not represented by a lawyer. So it is with that in mind, Mr. President, that this resolution that I'm introducing calls on the 1st Judicial District to take some very prescribed steps now on how to address problems with the current system so as to prevent delayed justice and irreparable harm to homeowners. Now, I would be remiss, and I want to get this clear for the record, because, you know, I just want the record to be the record. Let me thank my two colleagues, Councilmembers Taubenberger and Councilmembers O., who have both introduced legislation, not a resolution, but an ordinance on this issue. And while we are sort of working through the process to see where we reach common ground, although we may have some disagreements relative philosophically on how we get some resolution, we needed to make sure that attention remained on this issue. So it is with that in mind, and while I thank my colleagues, I also want to thank Councilman Alan Dom, who is Chair of the Housing Neighborhood Development in the Homeless Committee, and Councilwoman Helen Gimm, who has been a vital voice in this conversation. I also need to say to the housing advocates, and they know how I feel about this relative to any legislation, we turn to you and we send our constituents to you when we have challenges and they need help. So to Community Legal Services, to the Tenant Union Representative Network term, the Senior Law Center, and the Public Interest Law Center of Philadelphia, I want to thank them because the resolution that I introduced while just tweaked, they were the initial entities in the coalition that actually put together this resolution. And their efforts came together after the hearing on squatting in the Housing Committee. So to my colleagues, I look forward to working with you as we work on some solutions legislatively to fix this issue. But I want to note, although this resolution, I need to state this for the record, Mr. President, although this resolution is non-binding, I want to beg to differ about its importance. From my conversations with the housing advocates, there are laws on the books that could address instances of criminal squatting, however, many of them are not being properly enforced. And as we work through the pieces of legislation introduced by my colleagues, I want to make sure that we have found a way to talk about enforcement and that we bring all parties together to get feedback from everyone on this issue. So I'm looking forward to working with all, and most importantly, to my people in Longcrest and Longdale. Your concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. I am sorry that there is no silver bullet, single remedy that I can employ to fix your challenge. It's serious, and we're going to get it done, and it's just going to take us a little bit of time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I appreciate the resolution introduced by Councilwoman Parker. I want to be clear, however, that we have met, and it's good to meet again, we have met, and we have resolved at least to agreement with the City Law Department on the bill that I introduced, on the bill that was amended in negotiation discussion, that was introduced again by Councilmember Tom Berger, and we continue to work through. The police have said that they've written new protocols, but will not begin to introduce those protocols unless we in this body come to some agreement. We have met with Community Legal Services in an effort to try to see if we could reach compromise on language in the bill. A couple weeks ago, Councilmember Dom and Janie Blackwell and I visited Ms. Lackey in Germantown. Councilmember Tom Berger was represented by his staff. She is a 70-year-old woman whose husband passed away. She is a widow. She has three properties that are, they're not very wealthy properties. She was counting on that. She has no retirement or pension, and she sold one to purchase a home. She purchased all the things she needed, bathrooms, toilet, everything, kitchen, and stored it there. Her neighbor broke into her home, changed the locks, sold everything in her home, including the windows and the radiators, and nothing has happened to them. Those are criminals, and the police have not acted. And by the time she got her house back, and there's a pile of rubbish outside of her house when we visited, she has nothing left in there. When we left visiting her home, there's a parking area, there was no car. When we left the home, there was a high-end Mercedes sports car in there. These are not poor people. Community Legal Services is against any type of enforcement that protects the homeowner, and I understand they don't want innocent people hurt. There are a lot of homeowners that are hurt on this, and I will look forward to anything productive that comes from the discussions that Councilwoman Parker will have with Community Legal Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Chair recognizes, let's see where did I leave off? Did I call you Councilman Dom? Councilwoman Gimm. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'd like to introduce two privileged resolutions. One, a hearing sponsored, cosponsored by Councilmembers Green, Dom, and Reynolds Brown. Thank you for that. And also, the second one honoring Tammy Jo Schultz. For Councilmembers co-sponsored are Blackwell, Taubenberger, Green, Heenan, Dom, and Parker.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the heroism of Captain Tammy Jo Schultz, who successfully executed an emergency landing of Southwest Flight 1380 at the Philadelphia International Airport on April 17, 2018, saving the lives of 148 people in the aftermath of a blown engine.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings regarding the financial state of the Philadelphia Parking Authority and the allocation of parking authority funds to the School District of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Council President, thank you, and good morning, colleague, or good, yeah, good morning, colleagues. I have one privileged resolution cosponsored by all members of council, and I thank them all very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating Mary Curran and the Julia R. Masterman High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team for their hard work and tenacity during the regular season, making it to the PIAA Class A State Tournament and reaching the state semifinals.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Bennett Road from Roosevelt Boulevard to its terminus further northwestwardly therefrom.
Further to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bustleton Avenue, Solia Avenue, Eastwood Avenue, and Stanwood Street.
Further to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Spiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills, one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance approving the 42nd Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the modesty reserve Manola area, being the area beginning at the northwest corner of Front Street and Spring Garden Street, including the 34th Amendment to the Urban Manola Plan.
Further to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing St. Lazarus Bar to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 102 West Girard Avenue.
Further to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on Comcast Spectacor to reconsider its naming rights agreement with Wells Fargo based on its history of unethical banking practices.
And next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Offer one bill, two non-privileged resolutions, one privileged resolution, like to be heard after all the titles are read.
Please.
To speak on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide accountability to City Council for real property assessment increases, and authorizing the appropriate officers to fix the date for the election for such purpose.
Further to committee. Councilman, which one do you want to speak? After?
After the bill.
After the bill?
Yes.
Want to go ahead?
All right, thank you very much. Council President, I just want to explain that I'm introducing a amendment, a charter change amendment, to the balancing of the budget, in particular because with the mass appraisal system that has been employed at least my time here in the last five years, the appraisals of property have been significant, and at least to me, I don't have confidence in them. What I'm trying to do is to fix within the charter that the, that any time the appraisals go above the Consumer Price Index for all urban areas in the United States, which last year I think was 2.4%, any time they surpass that, that council has the opportunity to question the validity of those appraisals, and that we have the opportunity to approve or disapprove of that. To me, the current situation is taxation without representation. The executive in Philadelphia, the mayor, has a lot of power. It's a strong mayor system, but we have to have checks and balances. And right now, the appraisals, which have been consistent and ongoing, and even last year when we did not raise taxes, assessments increased, which in fact raised taxes upon people. I think the balance of power, checks and balance, has shifted, and so I offer that as a remedy. I wanted to explain it to the public and to my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution declaring May 2018 to be Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of Hepatitis B United Philadelphia and Hepatitis C Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising awareness of the link between viral hepatitis and liver cancer.
Mike. Mike. This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to amend Pennsylvania's Post Conviction Relief Act so that reliable evidence of innocence may be considered to prove that a person who is convicted of a crime is, in fact, not guilty.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide accountability to City Council for real property assessment increases and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be referred to committee. So, you want to speak again? Okay.
Again, I just wanted to note for the record that the legislation about the charter change was cosponsored by Councilmembers Mark Squillen and Kenyatta Johnson. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Just want to leave for the record, I'm not sure whom I'm supposed to ask or tell this to, because I've never done this before, but I will be leaving the chamber. Nothing serious. I'll be leaving, I'll be leaving the chamber, but I just want to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions today. All right, thank you. This is my first time leaving before the session is over. Thank you. Perplexed looks on everybody's face.
Seriously now.
The next order of business is reports from committees. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the report of the committee of hold.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee of the hold reports out two resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chief Clerk, would you please read your report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the committee of the hold, which is referred Resolution Number 180305 entitled a resolution appointing Lynette Brown Seau to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and Resolution Number 180306 entitled a resolution confirming the reappointment of the Honorable Phyllis W. Beck as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in the term ending November 16, 2022. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Resolutions Number 180305, 180306 will be placed on the final passage calendars for next session. Chair now recognizes Councilman Dom for the reported committee license and inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chief Clerk, would you please read your report?
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, which is referred Bill Number 180174, entitled an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by adopting the 2015 edition of the International Residential Code as published by the International Code Council with previously adopted amendments thereto, and Bill Number 180175 entitled an ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, by revising and clarifying certain provisions, making corrections for compliance with the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act and making technical changes, and Bill Number 180176 entitled an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by adopting the 2018 edition of the International Codes as published by the International Code Council with previously adopted amendments thereto, as authorized by the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180174, 180175, and 180176.
Second, it has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 180174, 180175, 180176. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next is the consideration of the calendar. The next order of business is... The next order of business is the calendar. Again, I note that these bills just read from the committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendars for the next session. Are there any additional bills for the first reading on the calendar that's recognized by Councilman Greenly for calling up the resolutions of bills for the second and final passage calendars today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 180374, 180375, 170956, and 180264. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before the consideration and considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment, and public comment is as follows. Your public comment must be concerned of the matter of the second reading final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign in in order to testify. If you have not already signed in, you can certainly sign in at the Sergeant Arms, which is to your right, my left, will be called in the unit in which your name appears in the sign-up sheet. You will have three minutes to speak. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold this faithfully, and when you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium, then there will be thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which your remainder to conclude your, you're reminded to conclude your remarks. Once the three minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the Sergeant Arms will move forward at that point with our next speaker at the podium. I also reserve the right for redundancy to, of one issue, all right, to pursuant to our rules, but the repetition of comments in the same manner. I would ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker, please.
Derkel Lewis. Derkel Lewis. Commenting on 170956.
How y'all doing today? My name is Darrell Lewis. I'm 23 years old, and I'm a warehouse worker at Sky Chef Philadelphia. I'm another person who has been earning poverty wages for doing valuable work at Sky Chef. Let me tell you, it has been very grim and discouraging to work at Sky Chef for a long time now. If I and my coworkers had been granted the $12 minimum wage back in 2015, each of us would have earned something like $20,000 more by now. That kind of income could have changed our lives. It could have allowed us to be less exhausted, to have better housing, to improve our lives in so many ways. Three years later, Sky Chef is finally raising our rate, our pay to the levels we should have reached years ago. We are pleased that Sky Chef has finally implemented wages that look more like airport wages. But I have to tell you, there is something painful when we have had to wait more than three years to finally have the chance to be given the respect of other airport workers. My coworkers have suffered greatly because we have earned so little. Now that we are speaking before you, we are afraid that you do not act, you do not act to help us secure our future now, where we are no longer in the spotlight, our wages and our standard of living will get stuck again, and the progress we have made will be lost over time. Please act on our behalf so we can know that we are treated as equals with everyone who makes the airport work. And I know y'all understand the Eighth Amendment, right? Sky Chef don't treat us with the Eighth Amendment, right? You know, we get treated cruel and unusual punishment with the wages that we get. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, could you read the name of our next speaker, please?
Vinnod Subana. Commenting on 170956.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chovinavinoth. I work in dishroom department at LSG Sky Chef. I have been there five years. I am here to tell you, on behalf of all my coworkers, we are tired of being second-class citizens in the airport and the city that we serve without our labor. Philadelphia's airline industry could not function. The kind of conduct we have, RLA contracts, make it very hard for us to make demands in all the ways that most unions can. We absolutely need your help, please. Ask elected leaders of our city to make sure that all workers in the city's airport can move forward together and be treated as equals. Sky Chefs need to stop being associated with poverty. We should be guaranteed a minimum standard that recognize that importance of what. Thank you for the hearings, all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Clerk, could you read our next speaker, please?
Donaldson McCarthy. Commenting on 170956.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Donaldson Chocil McCarthy. I work in the warehouse of Sky Chef Philadelphia. I'm today standing up for equality. I saw what happened in the city, helping the rest of the airport workers to move forward in 2015, and me and my coworkers were left behind. I will tell you that it makes me hungry to hear airline Philadelphia boasting of making millions and billions of profit while those who send the plane off every day and accepting poverty jobs because they hardly any money left for us. No city or country should stand by allowing this kind of terrible equality. The country is better than that. Philadelphia is better than that. During my shift, I see my workers working double from 5:00 to 10:00. They're working double to cover the cost. All the time. We are tired of working too hard and being poor. We, we also stand up for us and allow us to be treated as equality. I want to stand here to thank Councilman Kenyatta Johnson because he was fighting with all steel and nail so that we can get our race. So I want to thank everybody who listen to us. God bless you.
Thank you. Clerk, could you read our next speaker, please?
Rosalyn Wukinic. Commenting on 170956.
My name is Rosalyn Wukinic. I'm the president of Unite Here Local 274, and I'm here with Donaldson, Shavana, and Darrell, and many other Sky Chefs workers who'd ask to stand for a moment. The workers at Sky Chefs, who are employed by LSG Sky Chefs, prepare the meals primarily for American Airlines at the Philadelphia International Airport, and we are here today thanks to the work of Councilman Johnson and the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to close a loophole in the 21st century minimum wage law. We are very thankful to this body for making sure more and more workers are covered by that law, but the company that we are talking about today has been exploiting a loophole in that law that we are happy to finally close. Just take a minute to explain what that is. LSG Sky Chefs, like many airline-related contracts, is governed by the Railway Labor Act. Bargaining contracts under the Railway Labor Act is very different from under the National Labor Relations Act, but currently, the 21st century minimum wage law does not recognize the difference between those two laws. Under the Railway Labor Act, terms of a contract do not expire. This, they merely, the terms of the contract merely become amendable in a long federally mediated process where workers do not have the right to strike. So what that means is that workers in, under RLA contracts, do not have the same options at their disposal to make sure that their contracts can adapt to local laws, like the 21st century minimum wage ordinance, upon a clear expiration of their existing contract terms. And that is the loophole that Sky Chefs for years has exploited. In December 2017, the workers here spoke of earning as little as $7.90 an hour. We believe that no company should have the unilateral and unending right to impose a wage below the city's minimum for other airport workers. The simple amendment that Councilman Johnson proposes closes the loophole for the RLA contacts and will ensure that workers seeking to be paid the minimum intended by this law will receive it now and for the years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, would you read our next speaker?
Joe Denahell. Commenting on 171131.
Yes. Good afternoon. This is the official decree of the people, remand and misquoit, warranting as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council mayor and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. Our recent hearing to approve the law department head, was there a discussion between the council president and the law department about filing additional lawsuits against federal government? Was there instruction to conspire with the Commonwealth Attorney General? Is this why no investigation by the Attorney General about my stolen home? Our lawsuits expenses the highest and best use of limited taxpayer monies. Has law department defended officials charged with unlawful and oath violating acts in one of America's poorest big cities? Taxpayer money must be used efficiently. Is there any Rico-style conspiracy to cover up unlawful acts? As a public servant, you cannot violate oath constitution laws without penalty. Has law department found missing hundreds of millions, federal HUD monies? How can agents and agencies steal my home without compensation, due process, or Seventh Amendment trial by jury? The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of judiciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC, 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987. Eighteen USC, 241, 242, 2381, 2384. PA Constitution, Article One, Sections 1 through 11. Twenty-six, P.A., CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 15, 8965. Fourteen, 133, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 USC, 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath constitution or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you. Clerk, could you read our next speaker, please?
Harry Barnum.
Commenting on 170854.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. It's past 12, so I'll say good morning, or good afternoon to everyone. I work as a deaf coordinator, deaf advocate, as a coordinator, and I'm talking about regarding the evictions of properties, and there's many deaf and hard-of-hearing people, deaf, blind people, et cetera, who live in Philadelphia and can't afford to move, and they're being evicted because they're on social security and they can't afford other properties, and they're being evicted due to that, and the landlord is like, "Get out. You can't afford it. Get out." So it's really important. It's the same relation to the warehouse workers and the injustices that they're facing. This is an injustice to the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, and it's really important that there's a town hall, that you have a town hall, so that everybody can get together and brainstorm, and you can hear some feedback and see, you can't jump to make any decisions, and landlords can't just evict someone. We really need to have an open discussion so that people can see the injustices that are faced. You know, we face oppression, our entire heritage of the deaf community, and for generations we've been oppressed, and to evict people from their home because they rely on social security and they don't have the income, they can't just be evicted for that reason. You know, it's, there's many opportunities for town halls within the hearing community, but there's never an opportunity to bring deaf people together to hear their feedback and their struggles and what they face every day here in Philadelphia. So there really needs to be a change in the laws or an amendment or something, and really, this is where you come in, council members, to try to change the wording to make it more appropriate and more equal for the deaf and hard-of-hearing to be able to live in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Clerk who signed up to provide a comment on today's agenda? Saying none, that concludes our public comment. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, who is here today. Councilwoman, do you want to be recorded on any of the votes?
Yes, I'll stick around for the votes, but I have nothing for interruption.
I want to recognize that Councilwoman is with us here today. This brings us now to our calendar. We will consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Clerk, would you please read the title of Resolution 180374?
A resolution calling upon the Congress of the United States to pass S. 1689 legislation offered by Senator Cory Booker to federally decriminalize and otherwise improve public policy and with relation to marijuana introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. October 2 of 2014, this body took the initiative to decriminalize small amounts of cannabis with 30 grams or less, and that was done by then-councilman, Kenny, now our mayor, and this, this body took real leadership, was the largest city in the United States to actually decriminalize small amounts of marijuana. At that time, it was estimated about $7 million per year would be saved by taking this action. Just over the past three years, there've been 9,000 fewer arrests based on this legislation made by this body, which was about a 75% reduction. In addition, the ACLU has stated that African-Americans are eight times more likely to be arrested than other ethnicities based on cannabis, and a number of other states throughout the country have decriminalized cannabis. Thirteen states, including the United States Virgin Islands, have decriminalized small amounts of cannabis, and you have 29 states in the country that allow medical cannabis, and nine states allow recreational use. And the main push for that has been based on the number of ailments that various people around this country are dealing with, from autism, ALS, and cancer, and so cannabis has been very helpful for those who have been dealing with a number of ailments. However, at the federal level, it is still a Schedule I drug, and so Senator Booker's Bill, Senate Bill 1689, also known as the Marijuana Justice Act, seeks to reverse decades of failed drug policy that has disproportionately impacted communities of color. It also allows us to use medical cannabis throughout the nation for those who are dealing with some of the ailments I discussed, like autism, ALS, and cancer, and I believe that following the leadership of this body, we're now having an opportunity at the federal level to also decriminalize cannabis. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved and properly second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, this resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the title of Bill Number? On that? Thank you.
Mr. President, pro temp, aye as well.
I'm voting aye.
Okay, we'll let the record reflect that no votes for Councilman. Okay, we'll let the record reflect that no votes for Councilman O'Neill, Taubtenberger, and O. Clerk, would you please read the title of Resolution 180375, please?
A resolution commending the Pennsylvania House of Representatives on the passage of a legislative package aimed at helping grandparents raising grandchildren and encouraging the Senate to pass this legislation into law, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to leave now.
It has been moved and seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the title of Bill number 171-131? Or I apologize, 170-956.
And ordinance of many chapters 17, 1300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefit Standard by revising provisions regarding waivers of minimum wage requirements.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question is now, shall the bill be finally passed? Chief, would you please take a roll call?
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neill. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubtenberger. Council President Clark is voting aye. Councilman Heenan.
Aye. The ayes are 17 and nays are zero. Majority of members have voted in the affirmative. The bill passes. Clerk, would you please? Please read the title of Bill number 180264.
And ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2018 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
This bill being had read on two different days. The question is now, shall the bill finally pass? Chief, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neill. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubtenberger. Council President Clark is voting aye. Councilman Heenan.
Aye. The ayes are 17 and nays are zero, and majority of all members have been voting in the affirmative. The bill passes. We will now consider any additional resolutions, privileged resolutions today's calendars. Clerk, would you read the title of the resolutions, please?
A resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Public Safety and Children and Youth to hold hearings on the status of educational, extracurricular, health and wellness, and career programming designed to divert girls from the juvenile justice system, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. I move for the adoption.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution passed.
And a resolution authorizing the Committees on Public Safety and Legislative Oversight to investigate police department progress in ensuring the constitutionality and racial neutrality of stops and frisks pursuant to the settlement agreement in Bailey versus the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. Majority Leader/Majority Leader for the day. Want to also acknowledge that Councilman Curtis Jones was also co-sponsor of this hearing. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the heroism of Captain Tammy Jo Schultz, who successfully executed an emergency landing of Southwest Flight 1380 at the Philadelphia International Airport on April 17, 2018, saving the lives of 148 people in the aftermath of a blown engine, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings regarding the financial state of the Philadelphia Parking Authority and the allocation of parking authority funds to the School District of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much. I call for the adoption of the resolution.
No problem. All right. It has been moved and properly seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating Mary Curran and the Julia R. Mastupin High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team for their hard work and tenacity during the regular season, making it to the PIA-A-A Class A State Tournament and reaching the state semifinals, introduced by Councilman Taubtenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubtenberger.
Thank you, Council Protam. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring May 2018 to be Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of Hep B United Philadelphia and Hepatitis C Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising awareness of the link between viral hepatitis and liver cancer, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. Chairman.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of a minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Actually, I failed to mention that Councilmember Alan Dom was also co-sponsor on the bill to provide oversight for property assessments in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Okay, the record will reflect that. Any other speeches on part of minority? Are there any speeches on the part of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Sundays in my house for the last couple of decades has been fish, grits, and politics. We get a chance to discuss these things in a family format. I had to remind my daughter how far this goes back to the time when Wilson Good was actually her elementary teacher at Gompers. Remember that, Councilman? And so it goes back into a family tradition. Recent events ranging from the White House to the Waffle House have stimulated that kind of debate, particularly in the case of Starbucks. And so millennials have a tendency to be angry. We're angry. And they tend to believe nothing happened up until their arrival. Like, when they got here, the revolution kind of started. And I had to remind them, and David Dix, who was on Inside Story, helped me out with this, because he cited a manual, and it is called the Negro Motorist Green Book. The Negro Motorist Green Book. This book was established in 1936. It stayed in publication until 1966. It was developed by a New York City mailman, not Birmingham, Alabama, New York City mailman. This was a response to the fact that African-Americans, then Negroes, had come into, some of them the middle class, and they were buying automobiles. And so the motor companies felt it was important, that it was vital at the time, to let Negroes know where, what towns, what hotels, what barber shops, there were no Starbucks, that they could stop in safely. So I want to remind us that we've come a long, long way. Like, when you have to make travel considerations by what town, you are safe to beg your family. And even though it is not perfect, that there were mistakes made at that Starbucks end, therefore policies will evolve, that this thing that my daughter was thinking about, this revolution, is actually a continuum and a evolution of thought. And calm minds working together, we're going to get through this. We're going to get through this. Because today, my colleague acknowledged the 50th anniversary of an important document to our history. Now, it's different if I introduce it, but Alan Dom introduced it, and that's significant today. And as we start to deal with today's challenges and how we deal with each other, it is comforting to me, as an old head in my house doing fish, grits, and politics, that I can see far enough that to know what we have come from, to where we are and where we have the potential, the potential to go if we work together. So, you know, every now and then you're going to get a hiccup. Every now and then there's going to be a setback, but it just renews the conversation about how human beings should treat one another, irregardless of race, creed, sexual orientation. And I'm proud of us for that growth from the Negro Motorist Green Book days to now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to talk about today something that's very near and dear to my heart, which is Cristo Rey. And it was in Councilwoman Bass's district, Cristo Rey. And Councilman Jones, this kind of coordinates with what you were speaking about earlier. In our public school system, 91% of our children have one parent. 89% are in poverty. Cristo Rey is a Roman Catholic high school in Philadelphia started in 2012. It's up on North Broad Street, but it's moving, I believe, to 17th and Allegheny, new headquarters. It's a Roman Catholic high school, but here's the differentiator of how the Cristo Rey method can dramatically change poverty in our city. Cristo Rey applicants are from families of four with less than $35,000 of income. Last year, they graduated 86 students, all seniors, and all went to college. In the public school system, it's about 66%. Cristo Rey was close to 100%, all went to college. These are from families of very low income and a lot of hard times. But here's the big factor of this, the Cristo Rey method, which isn't just for Philadelphia, but this should be nationwide. Every Cristo Rey student has to work one day a week from ninth to 12th grade in a job. I have four Cristo Rey students in my office, real estate office. I have four Cristo Rey students in city council. The experiences for these four kids is amazing. I've had some Cristo Rey children say to me, "I've never been in an elevator," or "I've never been in a restaurant. I've never been exposed to people working like this." And yet, the inclusion of students with business and connectivity is a lesson not just for Philadelphia, but for the country, because Cristo Rey has the right method. The fact that all seniors are going to college, going to college, all of them, from homes of low income and where half the parents may not even be there, is just an amazing fact that we in the business community, we in government, and all of Philadelphians need to adopt this model in the public school system. And I'm saying this now because we're looking at making a very large investment in the public schools, which is great, but I'd like to see some of these measures that Cristo Rey has adopted, adopted in the public school system. We should have our public school, high school students, working one day a week in a job. Going to work one day a week, in many cases, is more valuable than sitting in a classroom and learning those skills. So having said that, sitting behind me today is one of my star Cristo Rey students, Kiara Rosario, who's a senior going to Swathmore College next year. Kiara, you want to stand up, please? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Thank you, and I certainly appreciate the statements made by my colleagues, Councilman Dom and Councilman Jones. All of you know that our month is about to end. We've been dealing with this amnesty program, dealing with the Parking Authority, which ends on Monday, Monday being the 30th and Tuesday being May 1st. My staff has been over there, and today and yesterday, they went over, and certainly by 8:30, you have more than 300 people lined up. Today, there were so many people, they had to lock the doors. Now, what they're saying is that they're going to give people dates so that they can come back and that they will be able to participate in this program. So we are certainly looking close to make sure that happens, and we are asking all of those who are out there listening to please make sure that you take advantage of this program, this parking amnesty program. We're near the end. Monday's the last day, and it certainly will make a big, big difference. So many people have called us, and so many people are able to take advantage of this program. And we're asking you, if you have traffic tickets or if you're not sure, you know that anything 2013 and before is forgiven, feel free to call us, feel free to go there, and please take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader/Majority Leader for today. Just past weekend, State Representative Jordan Harris, State Senator Anthony Hardy Williams, former Philadelphia Eagles player, Connor Barwood. We dedicated a brand-new multi-athletic baseball, football turf field in South Philadelphia, brand-new basketball courts, brand-new totlot, rain garden, all for the children who live in the South Philadelphia part of my district across the street from a housing project called Wilson Park. It was a great event, a great turnout, and it just reminds me that we are in the process of wanting to revitalize all of our parks and recreational facilities throughout the city of Philadelphia. And I noticed that our representatives on the Supreme Court found the time to free a young man by the name of Meek Mill. And nevertheless, I think that was great that they found some time to do that, but hopefully if they read the newspaper, they pay attention to what we're doing in city council here in the city of Philadelphia, that they would take the same amount of time and read and make a decision regarding the brief to allow us to have funding to move forward as relates to the sugar beverages text that some of us in here voted for on behalf of the children here in the city of Philadelphia, so they can have universal pre-K, so we can have more community schools, but most importantly, so we can move forward in revitalizing our parks and our recreational facilities here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader/Majority Leader for today.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else on majority or minority? That concludes our session. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you. I move that council stay adjourned until Thursday, May 3, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved and seconded, that the council stay adjourned to Thursday, May 3, 2018, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you.